All right, so we're gonna start the Environmental Commission's special meeting Wednesday, January 8th, starting at 6:30 exactly. I'll let you do roll call.
Chair Waldes?
Here.
Vice Chair Setapin?
Here.
Secretary Shermer here. Alderman Craig?
Here.
And Planner.
We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, this is the time in the meeting where if any citizen comments, please come forward. No one shows up, so that ended at 6:31.
Okay, should I get started? All right, so this request is for the Croatian Soccer Federation. So this is a natural resource special exception, and I want to thank the Commission for making the time this evening for this special meeting. This item is basically on schedule, except for, we had hoped to have it on our previous meeting, but the subsequent item has been tabled several times because you haven't been able to meet. So again, I really appreciate you making the time this evening. So to the substance of the application, the property is located at 9100 South 76th Street. There are two lots that are part of what is called the Croatian Park. Croatian Park, there's owned P1. The subject property related to this particular request today is the southern of both properties, but in general, we apply approvals to both lots. So that's something that's gone back and forth. So in the case of this application, the area of work is down here. There's a previous natural resource special exception for encroachments into a wetland setback and buffer here on the property that was approved some years ago now. The mitigation area that is being proposed as part of this application is part of the same mitigation area that was proposed for that project, so it would just be a little bit of an addition to that mitigation area. So the request is to locate a number of poles for a new lighting for the southern portion of the property within the wetland setback. So because those are permanent encroachments in the setback, it requires this natural resource special exception or variance. There are probably some questions from the Commission about the poles. So the ones that are in red are outside of the natural resource features, and those have already been approved by a minor site plan amendment. Typically, something of this nature would only require that level of review because it's, basically, they comply with every other element of the UDO. So in this case, they're asking for the items that are within the wetland setback, which are these seven poles indicated in green. So I want to see if I have any specific comments about this. The wetland delineation is up to date. These natural resource features are not regulated by the DNR, so permits were not required from them. And there's a conservation easement that still needs to be recorded for the property that will include the mitigation area. The use of mitigation off-site, so on a separate parcel, UDO does require that the Plan Commission allow for that waiver, so if you want to make a recommendation one way or the other about that, that's part of the topic tonight. So typically, we would require that mitigation happen on the same lot as the encroachment. Plan Commission can allow for it to be off-site. There's a total of like 19 lights proposed, which, as I said earlier, they all meet the requirements of the UDO, and the applicants are here to answer any questions about this request, so, and I'm happy to answer questions as well. So there's a draft recommendation in your packet, which is a reflection of the content of the application, so if you have questions about, it's built on the substance of the responses that they gave to our ordinances' questions, and then some of staff's interpretation of that information as well, so if you have questions about that as well, I'm happy to answer them.
The UDO, I couldn't compare, was there a recommendation on the light, you know, the glare and those type of things when it comes to, because there is residential area on the west side of the, like, the LP extreme left.
Yep, so I reviewed the lighting plan as part of the site plan application, and the requirement of the UDO is that the total light level at the property line be zero. So they're not allowed to encroach over the property line with light, and the proposed design does not. So there's directional lighting that doesn't encroach.
Is it, like, night sky protection lighting, too? Like, it's facing downward at a field, or is it?
Yes, so they're oriented down towards a field. I didn't review them for the dark sky requirements, but they do have a shield, so it's not the, I'm not great at the terminology for this, but they do have a shield that directs the light into a particular...
Directional shielding.
Yeah, directional shielding, as opposed to, you know, a globe light that would emit light upwards, so in that way, they are minimizing light pollution. But it's, they're not, like, specifically, I didn't check for that, so.
Can we check for that? Or ask that they be night skylights?
Yeah, you could make that a recommendation.
I would recommend that.
Okay.
Maybe.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, go ahead. Please take a seat and let us know who you are.
Sure. Matt Zarich, Officer and Treasurer for the club, for Croatian Eagles Soccer Club. Yeah, these are definitely directional lights to light up the existing fields that are out there. Currently, we use temporary lights at night where we have to crank up and use gas and diesel power to give the light in the area for especially ball and some spring practices in order to have practices out there. So these are, these permanent lights will allow us to not have that environmental issue, but also are more directional versus the temporary lights, which kind of just shine wherever. So it's very much more light sky, night sky friendly than the current situation.
And they're turned off at specific times?
Correct, correct.
They would be turned off at the end of practices, in the evenings. There was a provision, initially requested, that lights be turned off by 10 o'clock, but the Planning Commission saw no need to pursue that, and so we're not necessarily limited by any...
Our neighbors, you know, so our friends' neighbors are Carmex to the south, which they're, they're lighting their area, and then to the north is some ball fields, and to our east is the prison or the jail. So they actually appreciate the lighting. So we have no real neighbors that ever concern with lighting for that aspect, although they are, they are full cutoff lights, so there's no issue that way there.
Yep, that was the term that I was looking for. So full cutoff means that it's shielded from encroaching into the sky above it.
Okay.
Correct.
I have a couple of questions. So I see that the green is what we're talking about, these green circles. Can you explain to me why it has to be in the wetland buffer and why it can't be moved forward and not...
Those are, those are existing fields. We would be losing the current field space if those were moved out. So, and in fact, even the areas where we are putting those, those are currently mowed areas where we are using, so the, we're not encroaching further into what's already been used over the last probably 50 years, but because there's a wetland buffer there, we're requesting those be placed inside that area. Otherwise, our kids wouldn't be knocked into light poles, which would be good.
Or prevent the installation or continued use of soccer fields that are already inactive use since the 50s.
So, just to be clear then, you're saying if you moved them out of the buffer zone area, they would be in the existing play of the fields?
Exactly correct.
Because you're not supposed to be mowing a wetland buffer either, which is a different issue, and it may have been historically done, but we don't, I don't think that we should be making recommendations based on practices that were not properly being implemented in the past. That's not what we're here to do, and so...
If I could clarify, the request is for a location in the setback, so that area, it is under the current ordinance allowed to be allowed?
It's in the setback.
The setback, not the buffer.
They're all in the setback.
Yeah, outside of that 30-foot space within the, yes.
So the mowing's just taking place in the setback? Not in the delineated areas?
The less fervent of the two, if that makes sense. I'm learning the terminology.
Okay. And then the second question I have is, so where is the electricity? Is the electricity all overhead, or is there going to be digging in these areas to get electricity to these poles?
We have a feed coming from our shed building. I mean, if I could, so we have a feed from the RTR at our shed, and then everything would be trenched under grade, so that is fully safely installed.
It is digging.
What's that?
It is digging.
So they'll be, they'll be...
Digging, trenching.
Trenching in the zone, in the buffer zone as well.
Like a ditch, which is just like a...
Yeah, I know you don't see it above ground, right? You're just saying they'll send something down underneath the ground?
Yeah, it'll just be, it's just like, almost like a, not saying a lawnmower, but similar to, where it just cuts a wedge in, put the wire in, flop it back, and there's no room for disturbance.
And that, I guess I would recommend that that be taking place outside of the buffer zone in every possible situation as well.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
Yeah, so, just so folks can, let's see if I have a slightly better drawing. Okay, so this is a detail, and the location of the poles is within this area, which is the wetland setback. And then there, the wetland buffer is here, so, and then the...
The dotted line?
The dashed line.
Or dash line?
Yep, and then this is the wetland.
Wetland's up here.
Yep.
Buffer, setback, if I'm correct. But I see no reason to go into that buffer. Done. Nothing will be installed there.
Would there be a want at some point, the expansion beyond these boundaries at some point, of where, man, we're just getting a little hemmed up and kind of tight as far as spacing goes, and we'd want to have more space? Would that be a future consideration?
We're landlocked by our neighbors to the south with Carmex, so the fields that we're laying out now are the full-fledged spacing of the fields allowed. There is no additional room to expand. So I guess if the question is if, are we being shortsighted in how we're planning lighting? It's to the full mask, maximum extent of current available use, and there isn't availability to expand upon that.
So when, when we're done, we're done?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, everything to, will be positioned to the south there is along the north edge of the lot line, Carmex's land, and then when we go to the east towards the correctional facility, that one pole is in the setback, whichever, the outside of the buffer, and then, correct, and then it's creek, so that's all usable land.
Okay.
There is no potential to expand.
My concern would be is that, you know, today, it's this, and then, you know, a year, two years down the road, like, well...
Sure, valid concern to that.
Correct. We'd love for the potential to be there. Carmex may have a say in that.
They'll cut you a hell of a deal.
Right. Doubtful, but great partners to the south.
And so I have, on the buffer mitigation, that's proposed there, that's an add-on, you said? What was the, what was expanded from before?
So, sorry, my mouse is dying. This exhibit, I mean, the impact area is quite small, so the original approval was for wetland buffer and setback, and also some woodland impacts over here. The mitigation area is here, and I'll be honest, I don't remember the square footage off the top of my head, but the proposal was to add mitigation to that.
Oh, so the pink is what was already approved as the mitigation area?
Already, already with our...
And now...
With our small additional, which, it's delicate, but smaller than square inches, that's, that's able, but it's small.
I don't understand what you just...
So the mitigation space for the seven poles is a total of 1,000 square inches?
Oh, you're totaling up the size of a pole and saying that's all we need to do?
Correct.
Yeah.
And I believe the additional square inches of that is already factored in within the pink.
Correct. So that's the existing plus our additional request for mitigation.
So we're counting, it's already accounted for, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Oh, that was my next question. So what's the intention to do to improve that area and make it as a mitigation site?
We're following up the existing, which I believe is...
So you have no intention of doing anything?
Preserving it, and there was an existing, no, there was an existing plan for that. We're adding to that existing plan that's already approved.
So it's an expansion, that is an expansion of a wetland buffer in this area that was part of this prior approval, so there's, it's mainly with upland plants, basically.
Okay, so they are putting some plantings in there and stuff?
And then it will go under a conservation easement, which still needs to be recorded, so.
When will that be done, roughly, like, in the timeline of things?
The conservation easement or the reseeding?
The conservation easement.
So the conservation easement, I would have to go back and look at the status of it, has already been reviewed by my department, and it would, I think it's already been accepted by common council, but it still hasn't been recorded. So that is something that does need to happen.
We're not in charge of it, so...
Yeah, so it's a little bit of a sticky wicket, because the applicants here are not the property owners. So the property owners are aware of the project and aware of the impact area, et cetera, but that was something that went back and forth for a prior, for this prior approval, so it still hasn't been recorded.
The property owners started the existing mitigation area, and now it's expanded upon it on our request.
Yep.
So they seem to respect that requirement.
But there won't be any sort of objection, there won't be any sort of fight of...
The two groups work together. It's Croatian owners...
It's one Croatian community.
It's one Croatian community. The Croatians own it, and we're the soccer club, we're working together.
Kind of like parent company, subsidiary, sort of.
Exactly.
Gotcha.
So Marion, this might be a question for you, and I guess this part of why I was asking, if that hasn't been done or dealt with, is there any other option to, instead of put this pink chunk of land and say this is our mitigation area, to simply spend the equal amount or as much of the cost on improving this actual wetland area in here? Like, is there buckthorn in it? Is there invasive species in it? Because this is a wetland, and that's not going away. I think we should be recommending more that, like, let's improve this as a wetland, than let's just take this chunk you've been mowing over here, pull the sod up, I just read this, put new seed down, and call it wetland.
You could make that recommendation as an addition to the mitigation area, but the way that the ordinance works, it's supposed to be a one, it's just...
One for one.
It's a base area.
Square footage area.
Square footage, yep. So the new UDO will allow for those kinds of mitigation or compensation options.
And we're still operating under the old UDO?
Correct, so actually, the...
We talked about this last...
Yeah.
Okay.
So that, that project is, actually, the public hearing for it is tomorrow. So it'll be the public hearing for the adoption of the new ordinances tomorrow. We're hoping for a timeline of by the end of February to have it adopted, depending on discussion and revisions and those kinds of things, so. But any applications submitted between now and whatever the date of adoption is reviewed under the current ordinance, so. I hear the suggestion, and I told...
I thought you said that last time, though.
That's, yes, because...
So this one falls within that or not?
This application is being reviewed under the current ordinance, the old ordinance.
The old ordinance.
Yep.
Because the new UDO hasn't been adopted.
It hasn't been adopted yet. It's coming.
Yeah.
I can't wait.
Well, I just think it makes more sense for all of us, and I think even the Croat, if you have a wetland that your steward's up, I would think that it would be in everybody's best interest, not just mine or this, to try to make it the nicest wetland as possible instead of just spending your money on dotting our i's and crossing our t's, pulling up sod, putting down some native seed, and calling that... But it sounds like we can't do that right now, is what you're telling me, because we can't do that under the current UDO.
Yeah, you could make the recommendation that they consider that as part of their, like, site management, but, you know, the ordinance doesn't require it, so. The approval could.
Yeah, I just see here, they just have to buy certain seed and ply roundup, yada, yada.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, this is probably out of order, but I did have some, a public comment I wanted to make in, in sort of as partial response to your questions.
The Commission can suspend the rules if you wish to do that, but you have to vote to do so.
I make a motion, we suspend the rules to listen to the public comment out of order.
I'll second that.
Go ahead.
Do we need to take a vote on it?
Oh, yeah, sorry, vote.
Is this regarding this? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's fine.
So you call for a vote?
Oh, all right, can I call for a vote to suspend the rules quickly?
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and then, opposed, none, motion is granted.
What's your name and address?
My name is William Yuduski. My address is 7711 West Stonewood Drive here in beautiful Franklin. I'm going to point to where I live on the map here.
So, West Stonewood Drive, I live right here off the edge of the page here. So from my kitchen window, I can see this area, and from my front yard, I can see basically right now the boundary between the parks and the parson's.
Full transparency, Croatian Park has been very good to me personally. They gave me a place to do some physical therapy when I was having back troubles, and I think I can honestly say, except for Matt, the groundskeeper, that I have walked every square foot of that property, except the wetlands, probably multiple times. And so I feel like I know it from a natural perspective, probably better than anybody. And so some of the questions about, you know, is it reasonable for that purple area to offset the poles and so on and so forth, if I'm not mistaken, I haven't walked it recently, but I believe that area actually has some invasive species in it, so by putting in the little blue stem and the side oats and the Canadian rye, I think was the other one, it will actually be an improvement to the buffer area and setback up, I'm sure, what it's in or in the wetlands itself. In terms of improving the wetlands itself...
This is what I have. This is the most important area right here. The ditches very rarely have water in them. This area stays damp most of the time. There are some buckthorns up in here that could easily be eradicated right along the edge, but I think sort of just recovering that buffer area there will go a long way to improving it.
In terms of the, you already asked the question that I was curious about, I'm electrical engineer. My concern is how is the power getting there? Are you going to have to bulldoze through the wetlands? I heard the answer was no. And just in terms of, of the overall respect that the Croatian Federation has for this land from a natural standpoint, so the soccer fields are one piece of it, but the park is a, is sort of a private rental property, if you will, you know, for people to schedule parties and so forth. They understand the importance of the oaks that are growing there, the remnants of the savanna. They understand the need to keep that wetland area kind of pristine. There are a lot of critters who live in there, and so anyway, I think, I looked at this plan and I said, this is a beautiful plan. This is totally sensitive to the, to both the need to the park and to the land, and so, I fully support it. I'm not worried about the lights, even though, I don't know if I can even see them from my house, but it, but the lay of the land is such that it drops off fairly steeply behind the little shed there, so it's not like the poles are going to be onerously above the tree level. And so, anyway, I'm just fully supportive of the project, I've read every detail of it, and it is just beautiful. It's beautiful. In fact, it inspired me to want to volunteer to work up a environmental commission, so if you have any openings, I'd be...
We do, we do.
Sign me up.
I also didn't plant him.
He did not.
Unintended.
I wear the colors, because what they said was, what they told me was, basically, you have free run of the place, day or night.
We see you, you walk your dog.
That's it, that's it. Yeah, unfortunately, we lost the dog, but, but, but I'm still here. And, and so, you know, what they basically told me was, you know, wear the colors so that we know you're not just some creepy guy walking around the property.
While he's walking.
While I'm walking. Yeah, I may be creepy when I'm not walking and not wearing the colors, but I'm not creepy when I am, so, all right?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment, too. I played for the Eagles, I think, three or four years. I, I know always, you know, our coaches and property management always there, made sure that we took care of it as well. Out of all the fields in Franklin, this is probably the least one to get complaints on Facebook, which is notable. You know, you drive past, there's not garbage in your ditches, there's not, you know, trash cans overflowing, and I think it's, as like gentlemen said before, they take pride in it. It's not just a, you know, something that they're taking...
Taking advantage of.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. And especially in this city, we're super lucky to have so much outdoor space for younger kids, you know, anybody, really, I should say. With Polonia, Croatia, all our schools have great fields, and I don't think the high school field, I don't think, like gentlemen said, the lighting would be a problem either. And in my background, with their ditch, which, it's a trench this big, it'll be covered, seeded, and we wouldn't be able to know it in a year that it was ever, you know, that there's wires underneath the ground, so I don't know if there's any other discussion or you guys want to take a vote on that, but...
The one thing that I'd like to highlight, in exchange for these permanent poles, we are going to then prevent the need from the club to rent diesel lights, so bystanders, players, families, this is an opportunity that the club has to reinvest in our grounds. It's coming at a price of about $130,000, and it's an opportunity to increase the player's satisfaction and family satisfaction bystanders, so that when you're watching a game, especially at night, when we be practicing, you're not inhaling diesel fumes, and they're loud. I mean, it's, it's not the best environment, it's something that we're forced to do right now because we don't have a permanent lighting solution, and this is something that's going to allow for that. It is a decision that we took lightly, nor is it a, it's a financial impact to the club, but I think it's something that we can, we're definitely excited to implement, both in terms of how it's going to improve the southern parcel, and it's going to enable us to use the full player space that we currently maintain.
I think that that's one of the, as you kind of highlighted, I think the operative phrase that was used was a very respectful plan that's being thought out with this, that, you know, we're not going to be consuming diesel, creating the noise and the, and the air pollution. It's going to be a permanent solution, and it's not going to be something where, like I, I would, my concern was, is are we going to see you guys here in two years, three years, five years, whatever the case may be, where it's like, nope, we're, we're kind of stuck as far as what we can do, and that this is just going to be it? I'm very much pleased with that being the case, and, you know, as, as was mentioned, was the...
the respect to the environment, to the wetlands, to the environment as a whole, I think is, uh, is very thoughtful in, in the, in both the planning and hopefully the execution as well.
It's our land, we own it, so we're gonna definitely take care of it.
Question?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the natural resource special exception for proposed impacts to the wetland setback for the installation of the lighting poles on the property located in ninety-one hundred South Seventy-Sixth, also known as the Croatian Park. I would like to add that we do recommend that the lighting is protection, protecting the night sky.
I'll second that.
I understand you've already made that, but, yeah.
So that we just make sure that it's shielded from going correct and it's directionalized, okay?
Yeah.
I just wanna understand what the proposal is, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I'll second that motion.
Alright, let's take it to vote. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, um, a motion that we pass.
Motion passed.
Motion passed, yeah. Keep it easy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good call, Marion. Get out of your car.
Alright, give me one second, just getting this one set. Alright. Alright, so this one is for the asphalt path and boardwalk, uh, located at eight-two-two-five and eight-two-five-five, eight-four-two-nine and eight-four-five-nine West Forest Hill Avenue, also known as the, uh, middle school.
Yeah, I can jump in and give a background of the project. Previously, the Franklin Public Schools, uh, received approval, um, site plan approval on this site for building addition to the administration building, um, a storage building, parking lot, playground, soccer fields, which are now, there's more to the west here. But this exhibit is showing the proposed, um, trail primarily a boardwalk. There's some asphalt, uh, that does go through the, uh, wetland, wetland buffer, wetland setback. It was looked at, at the time and considered with the site plan. The plan commission essentially recommended approval, but once this, it was planned in the future, so once they decide to move forward, since it does impact natural resources, they need a, this natural resource special exception, um, approval. You can see on the map, the boardwalk, the pathway and boardwalk essentially connect the, um, north and south side of the site to, um, to the east here is the middle school property. The colors that are shown, the yellow is the asphalt pavement within the wetland setback. The blue is, um, the boardwalk within the wetland setback. Green is, excuse me, the boardwalk in the wetland buffer. And then, the orange is the, uh, boardwalk in the wetland area. So there's about one thousand forty-six square feet of wetland disturbance, five hundred and twenty-eight square feet of wetland buffer, and two thousand one hundred and fourteen square feet of wetland setback. That does count that entire length of the boardwalk. Really, the boardwalk is just installed, um, it's raised above. So the im- the actual impact is, um, really less than that. It's just the posts that sit on the ground. The only recommendation from staff is a revision of the conservation easement to reflect the most recent wetland delineations on site. And then it would also reflect this approval. Uh, so with that, staff is recommending approval.
Is the intention of this path just so that students can walk from the new facilities to the school?
So it has a couple of purposes. Andy Cromie, um, Assistant Superintendent with Franklin Public Schools, eighty-two fifty-five West Forest Hill. It has a couple of components. One, you'll notice a parking lot that's in the lower, uh, right of the particular map that's already existing, associated with the middle school. So, um, there's a possibility that parking exists there, um, on a weekend. So while the building itself will have use throughout the year, it's really about eight soccer, uh, Saturdays that'll have significant parking, so that provides some overflow parking and a pathway to get there. But it will also be used during students, um, both with special needs because we will have a fully accessible playground, fully inclusive playground associated with it, as well as students from the middle school who may be using that uh, as an additional field during the day. And trying to find the most conducive path to eliminate walking across traffic as much as possible. So the road running north and south between the middle school and our district office, right? That's a pretty heavily traveled road at several times of the day, so trying to avoid that as much as possible.
I'm just trying to situate myself here. Is that parking lot, this parking lot right here? There's not one good map that I have on any of this. It's either showing this path or that.
This end of the parking lot, I'm sure.
This end of the parking lot.
So this is going in where the old school was, basically, right?
Yeah, the parking lot that's shown is approximately where the old middle school was. And then the path would go probably from the middle to western portion of the previous building. And then into, um, the fields where Luxembourg Garden was. And will become soccer fields, um, and essentially a walking path that's part of, um, the overall site plan to have fields, all-inclusive playground, walking path, and some fitness stations. So trying to provide some community resources outside of just areas where our children will play.
Okay, so the path is gonna go... Can you, can you just give me a, yeah, on this map?
And I should say, um, my name's Jesse Becker. I'm the civil engineer for the project. I work out of Stevens Point, uh, four-nine-four-one Kerschling Court, Stevens Point, Wisconsin, five-four-four-eight-one.
So roughly, the walking path that you see on the plan starts right about here. It kind of works its way around. There's like a natural, yeah, natural, it's, uh, appears to be a man-made, you know, stormwater basin there. It kind of wraps around that, uh, cuts through here, kind of like in between, there's like a wetland complex here, a wetland complex here. So we kind of took that path, we tried to put it in the best spot that we could in order to get up to here. So that pathway, it kind of just parallels the wetland and setback and buffer area, um, right? So we did kind of, kind of one of the tighter points of the wetland complex that we cut across with the boardwalk. And then ultimately it ties in, there's gonna be parking up here, soccer fields over here, and it just kind of lines up with that. So that's roughly what it looks like.
Okay, thank you.
Was this, just from my knowledge, was this part of the, the recently passed?
This was not. This is a separate project, yep, done con- uh, conjunction with our recreation department. So providing them some full-time day-use stuff.
Sure.
Uh, facility, right now, operating out of a school building during the day isn't really great from a safety and security standpoint. So providing them with space where members of all ages can do things during the day during a school day and having specific space designed for them.
Okay, and this is basically in the, the old greenhouse on to the left of the?
Correct, yep.
Okay, district building.
So the facilities are not part of the referendum?
The, the Community Education Recreation Center is not part of the referendum, correct.
This was put in motion before the referendum.
Correct, yep. This was approved by our school board last June, July, sometime in summer. For the building of that, you've probably seen the trees cleared along Forest Hill if you've driven by there. So the land has been prepped, um, for Plan March, start of construction.
So now, given that this new referendum has passed, are there any other things that were missing in this particular piece of land that are gonna change due to that?
So the referendum is not having anything done on the site?
Outside of all of this, okay. For the high school?
Yeah, the vast majority is high school and then maintenance projects at the other elementary.
Kind of facilities and things, so that's why I'm just wanting to be.
The umbrella is big, but what the umbrella covers for the referendum is very narrow as far as it goes.
Okay, okay, well, that's clear that if none of this is to do with any of that.
Yep.
I guess one other thing that I was just, you know, are there security and safety concerns with putting a path through here? I mean, is this gonna be something that at four o'clock in the afternoon, when the soc- you know, now we're gonna be asked for lighting for that too, as part of, you know, we need, oh, and it's dark when they walk through this boardwalk in the middle, you know, in the wintertime and, or?
So the plan is not to plow the boardwalk in the wintertime or to?
Not to plow it?
To maintain it from a snow standpoint.
Okay.
So, yeah, people could walk there, but it's not gonna be plowed. It's really for use spring through fall. It's the ideal use for it, um, given the playing fields and things there.
Okay.
The, with the two different sort, sort of mediums for this asphalt path and boardwalk, was that conscious as a thought process or is that a, this will work better in certain areas because of it being boardwalk versus being asphalt?
I would say it's, it's partially both. The main port, the main part of the boardwalk is really to eliminate as much issue with the wetland as possible by having it risen above. It's resting on planks. There's no pilings going down into it. So it serves some function of trying to eliminate as much disturbance with the wetland as possible. Obviously, the asphalt's easier to maintain for us, right? So we have that as the walking path kind of around the fields. But if we were to say we're gonna put asphalt through the wetland, I mean, that's a pretty extensive project that has some pretty great impact on the wetland. This allows water to continue to flow through, just as it normally would, seep wherever it needs to go with the contours of the land, sands some boards again that are holding up the, the, uh, uh, boardwalk itself.
And is there a concern regarding maintenance and upkeep of said boardwalk because of the amount of water that would be flowing through there?
From the lumber that'll be used, that'll all be treated.
Okay.
Appropriately, so will, at some point, will it come to, will have to replace? Yes, of course, like, like anything. Uh, but I was, nothing outside of the ordinary are we looking at having to replace on a more frequent basis than usual?
Yeah, and one of the nice things about the design is it rests right on top of the wetland, so it's very easy, like, if something were to happen to it, the post, it's like, it's not a post that's going like driven into the ground. It's resting on basically a, a two-by-ten that sits on the ground, so it's gonna be pretty easy to maintain.
And so is there a mitigation somewhere in this package too, that we're talking about, or no?
As far as that's concerned, um, we have a conservation easement on the site currently. I'm not a hundred percent sure if that was recorded or not previously, but it's going to be. Uh, we have to revise the existing conservation easement. There isn't a ton of impact, like two thousand square feet roughly, uh, to the setback area. And then what we've done, we've got a natural resource protection plan put together. Basically, we're increasing the setback area in other places to account for that space. So it should be a one-to-one mitigation.
But there's nothing on paper of where that's being increased or?
Uh, there is.
Developed yet or?
Yeah, I don't have that in front of me right here, um, but there is, it's part of the conservation easement in the natural resource protection plan. That specific area, my, my understanding of it is on the south side of the soccer fields, instead of it just being the standard, I believe it's a thirty-foot, uh, wetland setback, it's been expanded to include some of that area as well. So it, it goes beyond the, the standard setback, just basically it's, it's space that the, wouldn't be buildable anyway. So it's no loss of space for the soccer complex.
Can you elaborate on the construction of this, uh, boardwalk? When you say you're laying two-by-tens down over the top of it, can you explain that to us a little bit better?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, um, yeah, we've got.
There's a diagram on it.
A diagram on the map.
You had it up in that one tab. We go back to that, whatever, that last one. Where the P D S were.
Okay, I think that's what we're calling out.
There, yep.
Yep, yeah, so you can see with this diagram on the right-hand side, this is how it's getting constructed. It's based off of a design that's been used at the Schmickly Reserve in Stevens Point. I talked to the director over there. We basically use the same design. So they've got, basically, it's full timber construction using standard off-the-shelf timber that you can get, you know, whatever.
This green tree, I get it now, sorry, yeah, I completely just blanked it, but yeah, okay.
But will there be a limitation on the number of people and weight and all that? Is there, is there a, like, a warning because of the style of construction?
That's a fair question. I guess we haven't had like a structural engineer, like, figure out exactly what the weight, the weight constraints would be. I mean, the height of this thing, it's only gonna be a couple feet off of the ground, so it shouldn't be too big of an issue in terms of safety.
So you mentioned a special needs playground was gonna be, this is access. So I guess that is one of the things that I think is a real consideration of. You put a boardwalk in and then we have special needs, people intended to use it. And if they fall off into the wetland and damage, I mean, themselves is one concern, and also the wetland, you know, or if there's someone that is in a wheelchair. I don't, I have no idea what all of the special needs may or may not be, but.
Yep, so they're totally all-inclusive, but we would not have a special needs child walking there on their own. They would be escorted by an adult.
Okay, I think that I have seen where they have not, so this just looks flat, where you do have an edge on it, so that.
Yeah, I, I will say, that is something I also noticed myself. You can do, uh, at the Schmickly Reserve again, where I saw this, uh, original design. What they do is they have like a two-by-four basically right on the edge, and they just basically just nail that down. And then that acts as kind of a, an edge protection, so if you were on a wheelchair or a bike or, you know, not just walking, you have a little bit of protection there.
Yeah.
So I think that would probably be a good thing to potentially look at adding.
So just to clarify, there's no, at least on the boardwalk, there's no plans or anything? As, I know it may not be my rent, so if it's not my place, just let me know, but no plan for, um, railings at all?
Correct, yep.
Yeah, we, you keep the height below two and a half feet, and then per international building code, you're safe. You don't need railings.
Right, like on my deck, as long as I'm below, they didn't make me put a thing, a, a rail around my deck, so I do understand that. I, I'm just thinking, I mean, obviously for the children's safety is, that's important. But I'm also thinking, you know, now we're gonna have a wetland where we have middle-aged kids running through here. And potentially, you know, you're saying they're always gonna be supervised if there are special needs. But if somebody has a soccer game and mom and dad park in this lot and the kids run, you know, I mean, or mom and dad are at the soccer game and the younger kids are now running. or mom and dad are at the soccer game and the younger kids are now running around playing on this. We do have more potential impacts to the weather because kids will be kids, and they're not always supervised. So I guess I just don't know if, I, my question is, has that been considered at all or thought of? Or are you not at all concerned that that would be an issue, or?
I guess overly, overall, I'm not very concerned. Most of the kids will be playing at the playground or be part of it. Having multiple kids play multiple sports, typically kids tend to congregate together because they're younger kids, and they stay closer to parents. Typically, older kids aren't coming to games. I can't get my middle schooler to go watch my third grader to save his life anywhere. So typically, they're not coming. It's younger kids who will probably be at the playground, typically supervised by a parent from a visual standpoint, maybe not necessarily in proximity because they're playing on this field or that field. But I see very little of that typically from a middle school standpoint. If they were to go over there, they're being supervised. It's most likely PE or science would probably be doing that, so there'll be a teacher present, supervised. But will it be supervised a hundred percent of the time? Certainly not.
Yeah. I guess my concern would just be, or my maybe recommendation would just be that there is some kind of education about this is a protected wetland, there is an easement, and, you know, litter is never tolerated, but we have litter in Franklin. You know, we have gum being spit out on the, you know, yeah, we have, and so maybe just, if there could be something where there's some extra guidance on that and stress put on how we don't, you know. I, I don't know. I'm kind of thinking out loud.
Yeah, um, I think, I think maybe as a commission, we can, I, I minimum recommend put a garbage can at least at the front, in the back. Hopefully, people throw out their stuff before they go on, you know, just hoping that way, if we can recommend that, that'd be sweet. It's kind of, for you guys, it's a cheaper op, you know, probably the cheapest option. For us, at least, the opportunity is there for, to make, have, you know, trusting people to make the right decision there. But I do also have a question. The wetland, now, would you say that's mostly reeds right now? That you're gonna be putting on top of, and then if so, what's your plan on? Because that's gonna have to be cut back if it's gonna keep growing through it. So kind of what's the plan, the long-term plan on that, if that's what that entails?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of buckthorn out there right now. The, uh, the wetland scientists who did the delineation said, well, he joked that it's actually gonna be an improvement to go through there because there's a lot of buckthorn. I guess there may be, I, I can't say for sure that there's no reeds or anything like that, but it is, it's in, it's got invasives all over the place. I don't know if you want to speak to potential maintenance?
I, I'm trying to think of, if there's reeds in the back, I know we have them in the, that's really detention pond up front, so that has a ton of them. I don't notice a whole lot in the back. I, I can't say specifically if there is.
Okay, because, yeah, I'm just thinking like, uh, I used to walk through when the old, I went to the old school, so I used to walk through the woods in the back there to get through the neighborhood.
I'll go back to actually, um, when I walked the Schmickly Reserve, like, kind of as part of the prep for this project, the way that they did it there, I don't really think they really maintained along the sides at all. Like, the, the planks, like, it doesn't allow a lot of light through, so there's probably not gonna be a ton of plant vegetation coming through. And even if there is, you could probably just cut that off, like, right at the plank if you had to. And they actually let the reed canary grass kind of grow up around it. So when you're walking through it, um, you know, you're, you're two feet off the ground when you're walking, and then the reed canary grass is probably like four feet roughly in some spots. So it made for an interesting path. So I don't think you necessarily have to do anything, as long as weeds aren't growing like through the planks of the boardwalk.
I'll make a motion to recommend the, the National Resource Special Exception for Franklin Public Schools for the properties at eighty-two twenty-five, eighty-two fifty-five, eighty-four twenty-nine, eighty-four fifty-nine, West Forest Hill Avenue.
I second that.
All right, so let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All, um. All opposed, um, the motion is passed.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else that you guys wanted to kind of talk about, or are you all good?
Yeah, thank you, Alderman. There's a list of the dates which you guys reviewed at your last meeting. My only question to you is, do you have any agenda items that you'd like for inclusion on your upcoming agenda? There'll be the item about the U D O update, there will be a number of other things, but if you have anything, you can tell me now or email me. You haven't met in kind of a while, so. Yeah, but that meeting is on the twenty-second, so.
I know we have a jam-packed one.
It'll be, we'll have to have a chat about the scope of the agenda, but there are some time-sensitive items. It's just these, the school district has been waiting for a long time, so.
Okay, sounds good.
I guess, I, I don't know, I guess this would be an agenda item. I would like to better understand, when we have people like this come here, but we don't even see the mitigation. Like, it's hard to understand or say, yeah, go ahead, go through the mit, and, so I, I just, I'm hesitant on what we just did because I don't feel like we saw a full, complete package. And you're asking, you know, so it's the school, everybody loves the school, it's kid, it's for kid, you know. But a full, complete package of what are you gonna do in exchange for this? Because it's not about, it's about, we're, our job is to look at a wetland area and try to keep it as good or better than what it is, right? That's what we're commissioned to do. That's why I come here. So when I don't even understand, because it's not been supplied, what the mitigation is to run a boardwalk through a wetland, it's really difficult to make a decision, and I.
I, yeah, I kind of echo a lot of what.
So when you made the motion, I'm like, okay, and then I also do feel like it's hard to be the bad guy up here to say, I'm either gonna abstain from voting, or I'm gonna vote no. And I feel like I need to start doing that unless we're gonna start addressing, we need a full, complete package. So I'd like to have some more discussion about that, or I, I don't know, you know.
I, I fully agree, it's a.
Otherwise, I don't need to be involved with this commission because my, it's pointless. I have no real power, and I can't make a recommendation because I'm not, I'm only seeing parts of what's happening, and, yeah, so.
As I mentioned, one of the items on your upcoming agenda will be that U D O update, and as part of the update, there's a, we're moving to describing it as compensation because it's, you probably know, mitigation is very much is, it's a term of art. But that compensation guide, it should be available on the U D O website. If not, I will send it out this week.
Well, I've raised this very issue before and was told the same thing. And then I was mistakenly thinking that we were, even though the U D O hasn't passed, that we were going to be operating with all these proposals under the new stuff. And now I'm like, okay, wait, I guess I got that wrong. We're still not operating under the new stuff, and so we're still going along. Not, yeah.
Not yet. I, again, our target for the U D O update is fairly soon. But you could make a recommendation to amend the current ordinance if you wanted to, to add that compensation guide as an option for mitigation, because again, the current ordinance only does the one-to-one, like, area for area.
And that's what they're all talking about too, one-to-one, and, yeah. But we don't even see the one-to-one that they're talking about in this one. There's not, that hasn't even been presented.
Yeah, and that is, so the ordinance doesn't specifically say like a mitigation plan is required currently. That's like the level of detail that's required. So I have traditionally not treated an application as complete without that information, but that is a practice and not the policy.
But on the same note, even if we had said no, I mean, the gentleman said there was clearing and most of the work is done already, so I don't know if.
I know.
But it's as we, as I've kind of made mention of before, like, where we can not recommend something moving forward, and then that can be taken into consideration by council, saying, well, wait a minute, why did the?
What's missing in?
Why did, Environmental Commission said no, Plan Commission said no, so why should we as the common council say yes? Because these other two entities said, this isn't a good idea. And I think that is a much more of a weighty sort of consideration when things are brought in front of council, at least from my perspective, that is. So if Plan Commission says, all right, this item for, okay, this, this, you know, camping goods store wants to go in on Fifty-first, and Plan Commission says, nope, don't like your site plan, doesn't look good, you're gonna be creating a lot of traffic and a lot of havoc for the residents and for everyone that's involved, we don't think that this should go in, in, you know, on Fifty-first. Maybe go down on Sixty-second or something like that. Great. Well, if the applicant says, you know what, okay, I'm still gonna push forward, go in front of the common council. The common council may look and go, yeah, it's a great idea to put it on Fifty-first Street. Let's do it. But the, where if Plan Commission and if this commission also says, this is a bad idea, that will be something that, where someone will look and go like, okay, so why did they say that this is a bad idea? Why did Plan Commission, why did the Environmental Commission not grant you these exceptions for what you're looking to do? Yes, you're in front of the common council, and you're still applying for this, but two other entities said, bad idea. We as concerned citizens and as an older that would be serving on those commissions say, yeah, it's not a great idea. That's where even, and that's where your vote matters, of being able to say, this is not a good idea. So.
I get it. I don't feel like we've really had, well, I can think of one that I thought was a bad idea. I don't, I'm not saying that this is a bad idea, far from it, but it's like, the people that are gonna manage the project and put the boardwalk in have been held to the very lowest possible standards of outlining what we would like to see as a community and what we would like to. And I know the U D O addresses a lot of the, the issues, a lot of issues that the other one did not address, which, with, as far as what makes more sense. Like, does it make sense to say, don't mow it, or to put in grass, or instead of mixed species, or instead of, you know, I, I understand we're improving things, we're not, we're not there yet, but, I, I do feel like that's the only option is to vote no. And I, I would rather be looking at it in a more positive way and saying, I don't, I'll vote yes, but these are the things that we would recommend. With that, yes is, you know, we'd like to see garbage cans, or we'd like to under, we'd like them to put a, I, I'm reading some of this stuff, and it's in contradiction of what he was saying, like.
Can I?
Maintained into perpetuity here. Other people, options for other people to have walks and ride their bikes in the area. He just said it's only gonna be used by the school during school, I mean, it's opposite of what I'm reading in here. But I only have so much time to.
So, one other thing that I might even, like, another sort of avenue, not just like a binary up or down vote. One of the things you could do is say, you know what, we can table this until we get more information from the applicant regarding what is your overall one, what's your mitigation plan? We won't consider this until you supply X to us. You can make the.
Well, I guess that's what I'm asking, though, is like, can we just have, here's the basic items that we have to have before we're even gonna talk to anybody? Because that's gonna waste my time and their time, so they should understand, we wanna see the mitigation, we wanna see the proposed, in addition to the proposed changes, what are you doing, or the compensation, you know, that should all be included in this.
Yep, so before we get too far down the line with this discussion and away from the agenda that we have before us, I've made some notes for our next meeting about the compensation guide, to have a discussion about what your level of recommendation is. The document that you sign, so the chair and the vice chair sign the document, it is your recommendation to common council. It doesn't have to look like that. It could have, it's currently based on, and actually I would recommend changing it. It's an administrative document. We can talk about what it can look like immediately changing it, and if you guys want to do that, that's something.
Let's talk about that next meeting.
And then also.
That would help. Instead of you writing some form letter that we come sign, we write the letter that directly relates to what we just talked about and what the recommendations would be. And then whether they follow it or not is a different story, but at least we.
You said what you intended to say.
Exactly.
Yep, yeah, because I really hear you that like.
It would make me feel like, okay, I'm actually doing something here, instead of just sitting here going, agree, agree, approve, approve. And, and then they walk out, and the silt fence stays up for five years, you know, or the whatever, yeah. So, okay, thank you.
I'll send out the blank form for you now and a citation for the part of the ordinances that it looks at, because it's actually, there's the part four and part ten under the current ordinances. And again, you know, we're in the process of updating this new, or to move to a new ordinance, so it's going to have to change anyway. But you guys have control over what it says, so you should talk about it.
Okay.
So, yep.
Yeah.
Anything else?
So that concludes the meeting at seven thirty.
You need a motion to adjourn.
Ooh, I need a motion. A motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, opposed, none, motion passed to adjourn the meeting.